Ken Lauterbach, absent. Brian Roeth.
Here.
Eileen Davis.
Here.
Monty Quinlan.
Here.
Randall Brenner-Murrell.
Here.
Scott Duncan.
Here.
Dennis Olson.
Here.
Looks like we have a quorum.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience who can give the public comment? And then we get going to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from our last meeting and the agenda for today's meeting. Do I have any motions that we approve that are consent agenda? Are we approved agenda? By Commissioner Brenner?
By second.
Seconded by Scotty Ducey. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, passes six of them. Okay. Excuse me. I see that you have done some revisions to various documents as a result of our last meeting, and I also see that you included the questions that we wanted to churn through. So, thank you for putting that in our agenda today. I would kind of like to just go through those questions and get a straw poll, and then we can come back and discuss later. However, if you have other ideas, certainly willing to go through the documentation first.
Just one quick question, Mr. Chair. I missed the number that tonight's meeting is.
Oh, okay. Maybe it's 388. 388.
We're getting closer.
You're gonna make sure you're around for number 400, right?
400.
Do you remember the number you started at?
No.
I remember the number I started with.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right. So, we talked a lot about accessory dwelling units, and most of the questions are related to that, and one about plans or scripts. So, again, this isn't a final determination. Feel free to change your opinion as we discussed earlier, but I'd like to just get a quick vote on these items listed on the agenda under number one here. So, should accessory dwelling units be limited to dedicated areas within houses and additions on existing structures, or allowed as new standalone structures? Brian was absent last, we'll start at the other end.
Thank you.
Mr. Olson, thoughts?
Thoughts?
Okay, we have two questions. And that first one.
It's an either or.
Either or.
Limited to, uh, to the existing house or additions to the existing structure, or standalone structures.
Well, it could be three as well. You could allow both.
Right. And as the regulations are written, it would permit all three of those, in the house, an addition to the house, or an accessory building.
But only one per, you can only choose one of those three if you were to build.
Per property.
Per property.
Yeah. We'll discuss that later, too.
Sorry?
So, I want to discuss that later also.
Okay.
So, I'm okay with all those three. The issue for me is really more to do with setbacks. So, I would be okay with all those three, as long as it meets the residential code on setbacks. I don't want to, in my opinion, we shouldn't have a special, I guess, dispensational setbacks for ADUs.
Okay. I'm also okay with all three.
I'm concerned about fire. Would there be a firewall between the new ADU and the original house?
As written, the regulations have a provision requiring separation between the buildings, but that's the requirement that's in the building code. So, there is, in the case of a detached accessory dwelling unit, there are separation requirements. If it was an addition to a building, it would be subject to whatever the provisions of the building code are. I don't know if that.
Which, the short answer is yes, there are firewalls required between units, attached units. So, even if it's a basement, you're gonna have additional layers of sheet rock to meet the fire requirements. If it's a common wall, you're gonna have, a firewall would have to be created to separate those units, because they are separate dwelling units.
Isn't that UVC?
Uh, we're in the IRC, International Residential Code.
All right. So, that would be a requirement for a conversion of a house with a potential rental property inside of it?
Yep, yep. There are other things like minimum ceiling heights, which are fire codes, because of the smoke index ratings.
So, how do we maintain people getting a permit and going with our codes without them sneaking in and making a little residence out of two bedrooms?
Well, that's something that we struggle with all the time. I mean, it doesn't matter what type of improvement somebody's making, there will be people that make improvements and don't get permits, and that's a struggle that every community has. We, that's not what we're trying to address under the development code and zoning code, but it's a struggle. No easy answer to that one.
Okay, I don't have a problem with the three.
I think it's important. Any of those options subject to reasonable limits on setback and on coverage?
So, what I heard was general consensus that we're in favor of all three, although Scott didn't know he wanted to discuss more.
Well, no, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Okay, very good. So, 1B, should tiny homes be permitted as accessory dwelling units? We can get to, if so, what conditions should apply, but tiny homes, be permitted as accessory dwelling units?
No, I think they need to be either in a mobile park would be the best place for them, if they're gonna be in the city. They have to have a sewer hookup. In order to have a sewer hookup, they're gonna have to, you know, only one sewer hookup per lot. They should have a separate hookups.
The accessory dwelling unit allows.
Usage of the primary.
Usage of the primary under the way it's currently written.
Yeah.
And you're saying you don't support that?
No.
Okay.
The code is written, says that tiny houses are not considered an accessory structure. They're a tiny house, or they're called a park model, and they're subject to different regulations. So, as written, they're not eligible for consideration for, as housing, and not eligible for consideration as an accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you for that question, I had it wrong.
Could you elaborate on why? Gary, could I ask for some additional detail on his response?
Yes.
Yeah, so, the, this is kind of a new name or phenomenon around something that's been around for a while, but the notion, the terminology, park models, what we used to refer to them as, tiny houses, what we refer to them as now, but it is a, it is something that is designed to be lived in, but it is not built to a residential dwelling unit standard, and it comes on a, basically on a trailer, and it's intended to be transported. Ideally, it would be used for things like a vacation cabin or place, you know, where it's temporary living. The, because they are small, and they are less costly than some housing options, they have kind of taken on or become an attractive potential source of housing in community. That raises a number of questions, things like sewer hookups. There are a, if there are a trailer, how are they attached or made permanent? Some communities have been exploring the use of them for, as an alternative for housing for homeless, and there have been some positive and some negative experiences with that. In some cases, communities have tried to do that and, but provide some support services with that, and have done so to varying degrees. So, there's a lot of questions about, you know, what is the tiny house, and what's the best way to use it, and what regulations apply, and what regulations don't apply. The state is moving toward some regulations to kind of help standardize what they are, but they haven't adopted them yet, have they?
If you want to build a tiny home, you have to, and meet the state, they have requirements through Department of Labor and Industries, and they are basically the park model standards from what I understand. So, beyond that, I don't know if they've implemented anything.
But it brings back some of the same issues we had years ago about mobile homes, and then, you know, double wise, we kind of moved from mobile homes to manufactured homes, and at some point, there were no more new mobile homes, there were manufactured homes, and they had to be built with certain standard, and they had a stamp on them. The tiny homes now, if Labor and Industries goes and inspects the place where they're constructed, and evaluates, you know, their construction techniques, evaluates their construction plans and some things, they can get a seal or certificate on it. That's not the same as a, combined with the building code, but it's something that's becoming more and more popular. And so, it creates this dilemma again of, what are they? It's not a real, you know, it kind of walks like a duck, but it kind of doesn't. So, is it a duck, is it not a duck? That's where the confusion comes in, or the challenges.
Thank you.
As a side to that, my wife has told me that on the NPR report, in Detroit, they've raised, you know, all the poor areas that were engendering crime and so forth, and plotted that out, and actually built tiny homes on separate lots, and started a new community.
Yeah, so, to follow up on that, what Scott's saying there is, you have a tiny home that may be permitted through the IRC, the National Residential Code, which is just a small house. It meets all the energy code requirements, it's on a foundation, and then you have the tiny home industry, which is, you hitch it up to your F-150, and you can tow it to the lake on the weekends, and then you come back home and you live in somebody's backyard. So, there's some confusion on terminology. I think what we're asking in B is the tiny home industry. This product that is being marketed as a buy it off the shelf from somebody that's manufacturing them, or build them yourself. So, we're focusing on the tiny home industry model, not building your own on foundation.
Yeah, so, in this case, the question would be, could, should somebody be, should the different options for an accessory dwelling unit, in this case, it would be a detached one, so, in addition to, say, converting the garage to a dwelling unit, should there be an option of someone being able to tow in one of these tiny houses, park it in the backyard, and call it accessory dwelling unit? And if so, does it need to be attached to a foundation? Does it need to be connected to sewer, which presumably would need to? There's, those are the kind of issues.
Yeah.
And water.
And water.
Yeah.
So, we can talk about what those conditions are, if we are even in favor of that. Right now, what I'm asking is, would we even consider tiny homes as an accessory dwelling? So, I heard Dennis say no.
No.
Scott?
Generally, I think not, because of the living space, I mean, it's designed for individual and minimal, is what the intent is. But if you're actually doing a dwelling unit for any period of time, I don't think that pans out very well.
Randall?
No.
Randall's a no? I'm a yes.
No.
I'm going to no?
Yes.
Okay, 1, 5, 4, 2, 4, 2, against, okay.
Monty, what was your, did you say what yours was?
Yes, I'm for it.
Okay, okay.
4, 2 against is our straw poll, and the size of straw. All right. C, should the maximum size of ADUs be capped at a set square footage? Should it be based on the existing lot size, or a combination of both the lot size and an absolute size limit?
And just to clarify, as written now, it is 600 square feet is the limitation. That's not, that's no bearing on lot size, it's just 600 square feet.
Say that again.
Yes. So, we're talking about the size of an accessory dwelling unit. Should it be capped at a set square footage? Right now, it's written as 600 square feet. Should it be based on the existing lot? In other words, if it's a much bigger lot, should the accessory dwelling unit be allowed to be bigger than 600 square feet? Or should it be a combination of both a maximum size and flexibility to grow, or flexibility to grow based on the lot size, but still have a maximum cap?
Boy, that's a tough one. Because it really depends on who's gonna be using the tiny house. If it's a student.
Well, we're not on tiny houses, this is just accessory dwelling units.
Well, okay, same thing. If it's a student, that's one thing, and they've been around for a long time. Not necessarily.
Now, what I understood, we're looking at mother-in-law situations, student, single person, or a couple. We're not looking at two families living on a lot. Is that right?
Well, there's no, as written right now, there is no limitation on who could occupy. There is the size limitation.
The size limitation would limitate it.
But there is, yeah, but there's nothing that says if you have children, you can't, or if you have three, two, you can, and three, you can't. There's nothing like that.
Scott?
That bases it on the lot size.
With no cap?
No cap.
Okay.
Okay, I agree with Scott, based on the lot size with no cap.
Can, before we go any further, can I make a clarification? Because I believe the way it's written right now, if you want to go beyond the cap, you would meet full setback. So, if you were on a large lot, and you wanted to build a three-bedroom house in your backyard, in theory, you could, because you have a large lot, but you meet all the setback. You meet, you have that 20-foot backyard setback. So, the size, the 600 square feet is, the emphasis is on that it's accessory to the primary, because, because, you know, you're on a smaller lot, so you don't want something that's gonna be too big. So, just kind of keep that in mind in your, in your response.
If we have, if we go by lot, the size of the lot, we could end up with two three-bedroom homes on one lot that has to be sold together, and...
But doesn't that defeat the zoning then? If we have two houses, two single-family houses on one lot?
Yeah, I...
But remember, we're gonna be talking about lot coverage, and we're talking about setbacks, we're gonna be talking about other aspects that, that respect that.
Sure.
But you're still right. I mean, you have a five-acre parcel.
Maybe you should be doing a short plot.
So, yeah, short plot. I don't get the...
So, it kind of make, I mean, I don't want to, you know, maybe it makes sense to have that cap for the, to keep it accessory. Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Now, if you've got five acres, maybe you should be doing a short plot.
Yes.
And build a house on it, on the second lot.
Don't tell me how to build my commie. So, yeah, my opinion is to have both a maximum ADU size, and I think it should be able to grow with your lot.
With your...
I have a, yes, my comment.
Grow with your lot.
I like the 600-foot cap.
I think, so, does anyone know what the cap is for Walla County? And does, well, the city of Walla Walla have a cap as well?
I don't know that Walla Walla has a cap, because they're dealing with larger units, but Walla Walla does, and I don't know, I think it's around 600 square feet, if I recall.
I don't remember for sure, but it seems like, when I was looking a few months ago, county might have had a cap at 1,200 or something like that, but a fair bit larger than 600. So, I'd be comfortable with a larger cap. I'd still like to get a cap, a larger cap, perhaps based on the size of the main home. So, it's one thing to have two 1,200 square foot houses on the same property, but it's another to have a, you know, 3,000 square foot, and then a smaller guest house that's 1,200. Yeah, that I think is more appropriate, more marketable.
So, am I hearing both a cap on the maximum size, but let it, like, switch with the size of the lot?
And the size of the main home.
And the size of the main home.
Potentially, yeah.
I'm thinking I'm changing my mind.
So, we're all over the board on that one?
Yeah.
Which is fine. Do you want to change now?
Yeah, I think I'm more with Brian's idea.
Okay.
Because I hadn't thought about the five-acre lots. We need to figure out some way of, you know, okay, you have a lot, it might be a bigger lot, it might be 10,000 square foot lot, and that's what I was thinking, you know, okay, maybe you can have a thousand square foot, not 600, because you have a bigger lot. Now, if you have five acres, I agree, you should be short plating. You know, you shouldn't be building multiple, you know, a house that's, and you end up with two distinct houses, but they have to be sold together, and all those issues. So, yeah.
Thank you. You ready to move on? You got your notes there, John?
You're taking notes too, aren't you?
Yeah, I just, all I have is a note here, is that this needs to be discussed some more.
Yeah, there's no consensus at all there. All right, D, should the maximum height be capped? Or should the max height be based on the primary structure? Or both based on the structure and have a maximum cap?
And right now, it's written in, oh, John, I need to check, it's either 14 or 15 feet to the eve line.
What's that?
I think it's 14.
What's that mean? I don't understand. Eve line, then the roof goes beyond?
Yes.
Okay, so, 14 feet, if you're talking about an ADU, and you want to make it a two-story for whatever reasons, 14 feet isn't adequate.
Well, the way it was written was to encourage these to be smaller, we didn't, the idea was not to have them tower over the primary residence, so, if you wanted a two-story, it would be more like a story and a half.
You can have a bonus room, because you can still have a steep, steep pitch roof that can go above that 14-foot eve height.
Yeah.
But you're right, it's not gonna be a traditional two-story structure in 14 feet.
Well, it's attic, basically, it's what you're using.
Plus the first floor, yep.
Yeah, first floor plus the attic. Because if you use first floor standard eight foot, then you only have a seven-foot rise, assuming that everything's equal, and you can get that seven feet out.
You're right, and we can discuss that change, but, I mean, what John is saying makes sense, if this is an accessory dwelling unit, you want to tower over an existing landlord.
Although, we just heard that we might want a bigger anyhow, so I don't know.
I...
Want to start at this end, Brian? Are you willing to jump in first?
I think the max height should be capped.
You'd like the max height? Okay.
Probably based on existing primary structure.
So, you could end up with a house with an ADU that's bigger than the, bigger than the structure that was originally built on the property.
What bigger, it could be taller.
Well...
Tower.
Taller.
But you, one of the options is to maximize based on the existing primary structure.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you use that option, then it shouldn't be in the primary structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are codes where they said that accessory units shall not be taller, accessory buildings should not be taller than the primary. You could have a tall house, there where you could have a tall accessory, and you could, the neighbor's house could be shorter, so you could still have that disconnect, but some codes have just said the accessory can be no taller than the primary, others set a height limit. One thing I have noticed is the height limits are creeping up and up and up. There was just an article even in Spokane's paper this morning, saying that the city had just passed a whole series of changes to their housing code, in an attempt to provide more housing opportunities, and one of the things I noticed they did was increase, they didn't say what, but they said they increased the, you know, the height allowances for accessory structures. So, I know this is, other communities are having the same discussion you're having right now. So, are we talking about a separate accessory unit and the height of that? Or what if it's incorporated into, let's say, a remodel of the existing house? Because I can see, for instance, and, you know, that somebody, and I've seen it happen, that they want extra room in their house, and let's say they built a second story over the garage or something. Well, could they build the second story over the garage, but make it into an apartment? And so, then, not necessarily meet these height requirements.
The height restriction would, at least my intention, would apply to detached.
Yes.
To detached. So, we're talking about a detached structure, not an attached.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I say not more than the existing primary structure. I just think of the, I call it the fire station down on Eighth and Larch. That's just a sore thumb. Every time I go by it, it just looks out of place. And there are several places around Walla Walla, and different places, that people have gone in and built way above the neighborhood. Just looks ugly. So, we have freedom of choice in this country. So...
Not here we don't. You're not being Jeffersonian at this table.
Well, I'm gonna stick to the existing primary structure.
Not more than the existing... Not more than the existing primary structure?
Yeah.
Okay. My opinion is that you should, uh, should have both a maximum cap and it should not be more than the existing structure. So if you have a two or three story existing structure, I'm not saying that you should be able to allow an accessory dwelling unit to match that height. You need to have both. I like the 14, that sounds reasonable, and definitely not more than the existing structure.
You're doing that, then I'd opt for 16.
So I agree that no more than the existing structure, but necessarily, I mean, if you have a two story house, I don't see the problem with allowing two story, yeah, four two stories. So it'd be higher than the 14. So I'm kinda more with you that we should allow based on the second or on the primary structure. So a limit, so it doesn't tower and go beyond, you know, if you only have a single story house, I don't think that you have a two story house. So no more than the primary structure. I think that's where I'm with, you know, the certain cap.
Scott, are we...
Yeah, I'm effectively the same.
That's a good way, that's a good way to play.
Are we, Brian, any for Randall on that?
Yeah.
Not more than the existing structure?
That's the way I interpret it.
Okay. Dennis?
I agree.
Based on existing...
We have a fairly unanimous decision right now? Okay. E. Should the ADU require an additional parking space? Or should we consider exemptions based on proximity to transit, the university, or other types of exemptions? So, an extra parking spot for an ADU, or options for exemptions?
As written, it requires one extra parking space for an ADU, but exempts, um, provides an exemption if the AD, if the lot is within a quarter of a mile of a bus stop. Um, so, and the only, the only exemption was, was a bus stop.
Without transit?
Yeah.
Or transit line, not stop, transit line.
I'm just supposed to clarify just the intent here. What, what is the requirement on a single family residence? Is it two parking spots?
Two.
Okay, so if the house already has three parking spots, then you wouldn't require an additional one?
Right.
Okay.
We wanna clarify?
Yeah.
Further clarification, does the parking spot include it inside the garage? Or is it only outside?
Uh, if, if it was a three car garage and, and, and there was no access for the, for that new unit to get into that garage, then I'd say no, it wouldn't count. But under, what, for a single family home, the garage spaces count as parking. The spaces in front of the garage doors do not count as parking. We don't, our code doesn't allow tandem parking. I, I disagree with the way that code is written, but that's what we have. And, I mean, we could change that.
Garages are dramatically decreasing. And we enjoy the benefits of our...
So if, uh, we, that we would need to make a clarification to the code then, unless the intent was to require a, an addition to the garage, we'd have to have, make it clear in the code that it's a parking, an additional parking space above and beyond whatever the standard requirements are. We'd have to be clear about that.
So could, could we call it, and I don't know if it makes a complication, but to, to my viewpoint, it is that, that you would have to have an off street parking path versus a garage?
We have to spell it out, whatever would meet that requirement. That it's a driveway space, a pad, something.
Don't we already require a 20 foot setback from the property line to the face of the garage? So basically requiring, what? Is it, it's a one car garage, it's one stall parking in the front? If it's three, it's three stalls in addition to the space in the garage? Is that accurate, or how does that work?
If you structured the parking count based on, like, the household, so, um, then I think you could write a code that would count spaces in front of the garage stalls. So that, you know, if your son blocks your car in, well, he's in the house, you can ask him to move it. But if your tenant blocks the car, or your son blocks in the tenant's car, that's a problem. So, um, it just would need to be a delineated stall for the resident, for that unit, um, that's, you know, you can't block. I mean, it could be in the garage underneath the, the accessory dwelling unit. It could be designed for that purpose. Or it could be, um, a stall off to the side of the garage. Did I answer, I don't know?
I think I did just, yeah, it's more complex than I wanted it to be, but I'm with you. Yeah, so I'm gonna start on this one, since I have a fairly strong opinion that we should be requiring an additional parking stall for any accessory dwelling unit. The likelihood that we're gonna have more than one additional vehicle associated with that addition is highly likely. So we would be foolish not to consider parking as a requirement. Again, my opinion. Brian?
Second.
I agree, but ask, but again, with the clarification of my point is, I don't think we need to require a garage structure. Just an off site pad or parking spot.
It's just a parking spot.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't know that we need to clarify that anymore.
On site parking.
Yeah.
Has to be on, on site.
With that kind of limitation, you have to have a parking space. Because if, if you're counting the garage as a parking and not a driveway or a pad next to it, I don't see how you can get by without a parking space. And I, I never realized, because there's garages all over town that are not being used for parking. The parking is outside.
Look at my garage.
Yeah. Half of mine.
Dennis, you have the same for me? All right, that one was easy. Okay. Letter out. This is Randall's addition. Should we require the same setbacks? You're talking about ADUs as for traditional development? Or do we allow ADUs to be closer to the lot line? And specifically, what's proposed is five foot from the rear property line. Is that correct?
The code is, as written, says the primary residence, there has to be 20 foot setback in the back. But the, um, accessory dwelling unit can be, or accessory buildings can be within five feet of the back. So distinction is made between the primary and accessory. Which does raise an interesting question about what is the purpose of function of, of, of the setback? If primary, if there's a different one for a primary and secondary, but that's, but probably why you wanna talk about it.
And we can discuss whether, you know, 20 feet, five feet, or 10 feet, let us start by...
So, so, so right now, accessory buildings, so like a garage, if it's under 600 square feet, you can build five feet off the back and five feet off the side.
Randall, you wanna talk first on this end?
Well, my strong opinion is that it should meet the, the residential setbacks. And it, not all accessory units, but the, the one, you know, the, the dwelling accessory dwelling unit. So, you know, you can still have a shop, or you can still have a shed, five feet, like, you know. But if you're gonna build something that somebody's gonna live in, then I think it should meet the, the traditional setbacks.
You mean...
Scott?
Well, let me clarify what he's saying, because traditional setbacks, then how are you gonna get the 20 feet if you put another structure up?
You gotta have a lot that fits it.
My, my position is, we, we decide setbacks, but the accessory building dwelling unit should be no further back than 10 feet, or 10 feet, within the 10 feet, you know, fire distance. Because particularly if mother in law or family, you don't want them way on the back part of the lot if you're dealing with them. And even if it's tenants, you still wanna be able to track, be aware of what they're up to. So not more than 10 feet toward the back.
So, so, so 10 feet from the rear setback?
No.
Rear property line?
No, 10 feet from the main structure hole.
And how, how far back are they allowed to build from the main structure then? I guess that's kind of the question.
So the main structure's already 20 feet from the rear lot line? That's the, the required for setbacks, or they're already there? Would you allow them to build another 10 feet?
Then you've got...
10 feet?
That other 10 feet to build it? Or less than...
Five feet.
Yeah, it's five feet. So, I don't know. Maybe you'll build off on the lot instead of...
My clarification's saying both 10 foot from the primary structure and 10 foot from the rear lot line.
I don't think you have that.
So, so the fire code would require, if it's a, a dwelling unit, we would require five feet of separate, 10 feet of separation from the primary residence to the new accessory dwelling built.
So, I mean, that's where you're, you're starting to build anyway, right?
Well, possibly. You might have 40 feet that you're working with. So they might, you might want it to be 20 feet from your house, or 15, which is not a lot of, I mean, we're, we're like 15 feet away from each other right now, I think.
Okay, now we're talking about the size of the lot.
It's all relative, I mean...
John, as it is right now, a, a detached garage, where, where can it go in the backyard? If you put it in the backyard, or a shop or a detached garage? That's what the dwelling...
If it's under 600 square feet, it can go five feet off of the back property line and five feet off the side. And, and it could go as close as you want to your house. You may have to build a firewall, but, um, you know, most people wanna provide some separation.
So the code, as it's written right now, says that an accessory dwelling unit can't be larger than 600 feet, square feet, and can be within five feet of the back property line. So you could have a shop that's five feet from their property line. It could, or it could be an accessory dwelling unit. The total amount of accessory buildings, um, can't exceed 720 square feet. And, and no, no accessory building can exceed 600 square feet. That's how it's written now. So you could have a couple of accessory buildings, but they would be small, they would have to be small. So the, the question is, um, um, do you want to have the same full 20 foot setback requirement for accessory dwellings, or all accessory buildings? And those are kind of the, the questions.
If you're looking at the minimum lot, you don't have that space. If you have a bigger lot, then this grows with the lot size.
For the products they're building today, yeah, you're right. Hayden Homes doesn't have really room to build a necessary dwelling unit in the backyard. But we have a lot of 6,000 square foot, 7,000 square foot lots that have modest homes, you know, 800, 1,000, 1,200 square feet. So I have, I live in one of those in Walla Walla, and I have a nice sized backyard and a 600 square, or 400 square foot shop in my backyard. It, so it, it's all relates to what's on the home, how much lot coverage you already have. You know, we're, we're those, there's a lot of things at play.
A 400 square feet is a typical double car garage.
Right.
So...
And I could've went larger than that in my scenario when I built that, but I wanted more area, I wanted more space outside of the building.
I guess in, in my perspective, the reason why I would like to meet the, the regular setbacks is because I believe that there are some lots that, in a sense, aren't suitable to do an ADU. And so if, if you can meet the requirements of the setbacks, then it's, it's suitable. And if not, then let's think about something else. Maybe it's not a standing lung, you need, you need to do, you know, an addition to your own structure that would fit within that. You know, either go up and build something over the garage, or, you know, something else. Now, it could end up being more costly, I don't know, than building its own other structure, but...
So, so in a scenario, let's just take a, the Hayden Home subdivision. Those homes, they, they've already, they're, they're maxed out, their lot coverage. So if they have a 20 foot backyard, if they have a 20 foot backyard, they wouldn't be able to build anything in that, because they can't put anything more on the ground. But that wouldn't stop them from putting something over their garage, or, you know, a second story if they wanted to, and where they could do the accessory dwelling unit within that.
But they couldn't convert their garage, is that correct? Because the, the parking outside the garage doesn't meet the parking requirement?
Uh, it, well, in most cases, those homes have 20 foot driveways. In theory, they could convert their garage for additional living space within the unit. But if we're gonna require an additional parking space, most of those homes don't have anywhere for additional parking, because we're not gonna allow them to pave the entire front of their house and make their driveways wider. You know, we have restrictions right now on driveway widths and things like that, so...
Dennis, where are you at?
Hmm, I'm thinking, I'm pondering.
All right, come back. Brian?
I'm with Randall.
You're with Randall, keep 20 foot, keep back, okay?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good, good idea too, 20 foot.
Dennis, Brian and Randall are all in the same, okay, probably?
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, that's based on the 6,000 square feet.
No, it's based on 20 foot setback regardless of the...
So if I have a, a half acre lot, I'm still limited to 20 feet?
But you have plenty of room.
I guess my argument is that if you have a half acre lot, yeah, you can meet those, the 20 foot setback and build something back there. It's, it's adequate in your lot. But if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, then it's probably not adequate. You probably don't have room then to build this ADU back there. Then you think about something else, or maybe you can't do it. It's not adequate in your space.
So I'll share my minority opinion. It's definitely that. I, I really, I really don't see the difference in a five foot setback from the rear property line if my bedroom or kitchen or whatever is five foot from the side setback adjacent to my neighbors. I, I don't, I don't really see a big difference between five feet in the side and five feet in the back. So I would be perfectly comfortable with a five foot setback in the rear for an ADU. But I am in the minority of four to one and a half.
You, you're saying with what, the, the five foot setback? Or the, the 20 foot setback? I guess I'm not...
I would be fine with a five foot setback for the rear lot line. Okay. Because we have five foot setback on the sides. And my house is pretty much right there with five foot in my neighbor. I have a very nice backyard. I don't really see a difference between my rear yard and my side yard. Wanna develop it that way? Okay with that? Uh, but I'm hearing four and a half for the 20 foot setbacks. Uh, but I'm hearing four and a half for the twenty-foot setbacks, so it sounds like that's the consensus.
So, on top of this, however, there is a lot coverage restriction, is correct?
There is, I think that's the next one.
Yeah, I think it becomes somewhat new when you start figuring the areas.
The next and last one, letter G, which is the maximum lot coverage, and that, for a single-family resident, is thirty-five percent, and the way it's written right now is that we would allow an increase to forty-five percent on lots with ADUs. Comfortable with that lot coverage.
Let's go back to the half acre, are we talking about the whole lot, the forty-five percent, or the thirty-five percent of that half acre? Because then you can build quite a big house.
Well, it, it's, you could have a big house, you couldn't have a bigger accessory dwelling unit, because accessory dwelling units are capped at six hundred feet, as written.
And we're going to have to come back and discuss the maximum size of ADUs, because that's something that we did not have in the...
I mean, because with a half acre, you have that issue right there.
And at some point, of course, it may not, based on how the house is situated in the front, but I would say if you had a bigger lot, you could probably shorten it also, I mean, that's also an option, but maybe not if the house is long and on the front, then you don't really have access to the back, so...
But then again, if you have, if you don't have access to the back, do you want somebody building a three-bedroom house where they don't have sufficient access beyond maybe a sidewalk or something, I mean...
It's on the last side, Ryan?
I want to hear from John on this topic.
Well, I, it, I think it's all kind of combined, I, I mean, I, I think this exercise is good, but I think we have to keep every component of it, they all work together, I mean, lot size, maximum structure, the setbacks, the fact that we're talking about accessory dwelling units, we're not talking about a second home, a three-bedroom, two-car garage house in your backyard. If you have the space to build that, you should be looking at other options to create a new lot, because quite honestly, I, I don't, I don't see many people trying to go that route, the point is, is to provide additional housing for the student that's here for four years, or the ailing, you know, in-laws, you know, things like that, so I think they all kind of work together and, and...
So, under the right circumstances, you think it'd be appropriate to go as high as forty-five percent of lot coverage?
Well, right now, like a duplex, our code allows forty-five percent lot coverage for, if you're building a duplex.
But it does require a larger lot?
It does require a larger lot, our current code requires seventy, a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, and, you know, you still have to meet setbacks, and you still have to, you know, you're providing more parking for a duplex, it's two per unit.
The way it is written right now is that a, well, it, we, we, there's a provision that allows it to increase to forty-five percent, so that, that, that's another kind of variable that ends up affecting things, because if you have a, depending on the size of your single-family residence, the size of your lot, you may not be able to have an accessory dwelling unit up to the maximum size, so there's, there's, John, that there's these different variables, and it all comes into play, and you'll get a, so each equation will be different, how large is the lot, how large is the house, how much coverage has already been utilized, and that will kind of tell you what your options are, which isn't on the list, but that's why there's the provision that we discussed at the last meeting, that if you're going to have an accessory dwelling unit, then you need to have a pre-application meeting with city staff, so that you can talk through all these issues before you spend a bunch of time and money and find that you've gotten off course.
I guess it's ideal that we have these last two items together, because they really do go hand in hand more than some of the others, is the, the size of the ADU and the lot coverage.
Yeah, the, yeah, the size of the ADU, you know, capping it, the, whether or not you allow the reduced setback, and then the lot coverage, I think, kind of go hand in hand, and I, in Walla Walla, where I'm at, where my home is, I, I, like, it's a six thousand square foot lot, we have an eight hundred and fifty square foot footprint for our home, we're twenty-five feet from the front, and I have a four hundred square foot garage in the back that's five feet off the back, five feet off the side, in theory, I could, I could apply and add a second story to that and create an accessory dwelling unit under the city's codes. I, I'm not even close to the, to the thirty-five percent lot coverage, let alone forty-five percent, but because of all of the different, all of the different aspects of the, of the code, the restrictions, they all work together to make sure that you're not overbuilding the lot. So, you know, in, in a lot of our traditional style homes we're seeing today, where they're, they're maxing out the lot coverage and they're maxing out the setbacks, I don't think that you're going to see in the newer subdivisions, much conversions or providing of these units, unless they're within the dwelling unit, but even then, they often don't have, they aren't able to provide the, the parking stall that's needed, so...
With a, with the, the minimum lot size of six thousand square feet, thirty-five percent is twenty-one hundred square feet, so you have twenty-one hundred square feet to work with between your primary residence and the accessory, so that's kind of, you also then have a cap of, of six hundred, so you, you may not achieve the full thirty-five percent lot coverage, but you also, depending on circumstances, may not be able to achieve the full six hundred square feet of dwelling unit either, it depends on the size of the lot and the size of, of the primary, but you have twenty-one hundred square feet to work with if you have a six thousand square foot lot, the bigger the lot is, then you have the more to work with.
So, we're allowing up to forty-five, though, so what's the forty-five?
Forty-five would be two thousand seven hundred, twenty-seven hundred.
Six hundred feet.
So, you do that, basically, kind of be...
Yeah.
The ability to build that.
Yeah, it comes out, the numbers are, at least the minimum lot size, they come out just about right, so that you aren't being penalized for adding the accessory dwelling.
But you, you could, you could have a big, big lot, and that, you could, your home could pretty much max out, and, and the way the, that forty-five percent works, it gives you a little bit of room to build a small unit, and that's the point.
And, and at the, at the other end of the spectrum, you could have a lot, you, you could have an eight hundred square foot old home now on a seven thousand square foot lot, and you may decide that you want to build a bigger house that's going to be actually the primary house, and this eight hundred square foot house maybe be the accessory unit. I mean, now we have a six hundred cap, but...
Right.
I mean...
Well, and that's, the reason why the codes were written the way they are proposed is to prevent that sort of scenario from happening, because it, what, we're, what we're seeing, the research we've done, the trends that are going on right now, is that's not the point, it's not so that you can build your retirement home in your backyard and run out the front to your kids or whatever. You may want to retire into your backyard, but it's going to be a smaller unit, and your kids are going to live in the big unit, or the eight hundred square foot unit. Would it be helpful if we got Walla Walla's code, what they've adopted, and, and presented that to you at the next meeting, so that we have a really, you have a really clear understanding, and we have a clear understanding what Walla Walla is doing? I mean, I, I hate to say, well, Walla Walla is doing it, but it, sometimes it's helpful to see what your neighbors are doing, and I know it's helpful for, you know, people in the community if they, you know, if they're choosing to live in one or the other, they may choose to move to Walla Walla or live in Walla Walla if that's what they want to do, and you can't do it here, but...
Yeah, I think perspective is always helpful.
So, I have another question, kind of a little bit off subject, but came to mind, and it's, so we, we have a thirty-five percent lot coverage for a single-family home, and then we're willing to give you another ten percent if you do an accessory dwelling unit, in a sense, is if you end up with potentially an extra family, we'd like you actually even crowd the, the place more. What's the rationale? Why don't we then allow a forty-five percent lot coverage in a single family? I mean, we, you have one family, more coverage, bigger house potentially if they need it.
The trend we're seeing is, it's a, it's the lack of affordable housing is, is one, one reason why you're starting to see community upon community adopting ADU regulations. There's actually a provision, there's a, a bill being proposed in this next legislative cycle, that would require all communities in Washington State over a population of five thousand to require, or to allow accessory dwelling units with, with very similar standards that we're talking about, but I think it's up to two additional dwelling, they're actually, they would, this, the proposal wouldn't allow up to two additional dwelling units per lot in addition to the primary residence, so, and, and the, the driving factor behind that proposal is the affordable housing crisis, and just not having enough. And it's not, the affordable housing crisis that we're hearing about and other communities are experiencing, it's not, it's not affordable housing necessarily for a family, because most families with two incomes can afford to buy a house in the communities they live in, not always, but most, but it's, it's the one-bedroom apartments that are lacking, you know, the studio apartments, and so that's what they're, that's what the trend is, the hole they're trying to fill.
Hey, John, is the, the basis of the lot coverage requirement, is that for stormwater management purposes, or is it for open space and light and fresh air, or what's, what's the rationale? Maybe turn around another way, if we have a, if there are setback requirements, and if there is a cap on the size of ADUs, is there a need for a lot coverage requirement? And if so, what need is that meeting?
Well, historically, I mean, you know this as well as I do, going back to setbacks and lot coverage is, it came, it's the, it's the quality of life, it's the access to light and, and air and open space, the, whether, the stormwater issue, I mean, I, I believe we're planning for a hundred percent, when, when a subdivision comes in, we're, we're expecting a hundred percent of the runoff to come to the street and collect in the stormwater facilities that are designed for the neighborhood, but, so I, I think there is, I don't think the stormwater is really an issue, because then, in the new subdivisions anyhow, it should be designed for that. Do you have, does that answer your question, or do you...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess it just adds to the, to the, the discussion, because if it's, if it's, you know, if I have a lot, and I have a house on it, and I want to have an accessory dwelling unit, it's only going to adversely affect me, arguably, and, and, and so, and, and, and then I may want to sell the house, but that, that affects me if you reflect the price, so I'm just, I'm wondering if, if the, if we have a cap on the size, do we, do we simple, can we simplify things by eliminating the lot coverage requirement, or is that complicated by eliminating it?
Well, I think it would complicate it, because we have, we're going to have a lot coverage requirement in our zoning code to, to meet, to, for the quality of life that we, I mean, I don't think anybody in this room would want a lot to be built out at eighty or ninety or a hundred percent in a residential area, I don't think that's acceptable, I mean, I think most people expect when they walk out into their backyard, relatively speaking, when they look to the left, they're going to see more backyard, and to the right, they're going to see more backyard with some minor intrusions here and there, it's a, that's just a quality of life issue, so the thirty-five percent's not going away, I mean, I'm not hearing that it should go away, it's, it's pretty standardized across most zoning codes, is to have some sort of cap on your lot coverage, but to encourage and allow an additional dwelling unit, it seems reasonable, especially in line with what our, our lot coverage, our current lot coverage requirements are for duplexes, that, that extra ten percent gives some wiggle room.
I guess for, for my perspective, and that's why I started thinking about this, is, so the policy objective is to give an incentive to create these additional ADUs, and so give this extra ten percent, but in my own mind, it's like, so you're crowding the lot more, and now you have, you know, one big family, and let's say it's smaller family, you're, you're putting more people in this lot, and you're reducing the space, so there's a community standard, we want to have a certain amount of, you know, yard and space and light and all these things, you know, what makes it good here and then not as good there, I mean, you know, it's almost like, why do we create these double standards, maybe we just need to have a single standard, you know, so it's almost like, okay, if I just want to have a single-family house, I'm penalized in a certain sense, you're requiring that I have a bigger yard, but if I want to just have a bigger one-story house as opposed to a two-story house with certain square feet, maybe I can't do it. You know, so it's just, I'm, I'm just kind of arguing.
No, I, I, I mean, that's a good point, I mean, you could increase the lot coverage if you wanted to across the board for any, to, I mean, the Hayden Homes development, because they're a PUD, they were approved for fifty percent lot coverage. I think that's too high, personally, but, I mean, it's only five percent off of forty-five, so, I mean, maybe not, I don't know.
No, I know, to some degree, it's sort of arbitrary, or, you know, but, but in my own mind, it's sort of like, okay, why are we making this difference, and okay, unless, obviously, there's some policy objective, but maybe we need to go to a different number, forty percent across the board, you know, we kind of...
Yeah, the, the bigger you make the lot coverage across the board, the more you will see people building from setback to setback, especially on the size of lots that we're building today or creating, you know, so that, which, maybe that's fine, I mean...
So, there still won't be room for ADUs?
If, if we have a six thousand square foot lot versus Hayden Homes, I know some of them are probably five or even smaller, yeah, I mean, you, you would still have a larger yard even if you went to the forty percent than what you have in Hayden Homes. So, those are the kinds of things I guess we need to kind of think about.
You have some thoughts, Brian? Did I read you right?
Yeah, John, John may be curious, so I went and found the ADU section of code for Walla County and for Walla City, City's probably more applicable to our work here, county, the one thing to note is eleven hundred square feet is the maximum size, for Walla City, it's eight hundred square feet, or thirty-three percent of the living area of the primary structure, whichever is smaller.
Okay. Okay.
There's no comments in this main section about setbacks. There's a couple of references to other sections of the code, but those appear to be International Building Code and things like that. We might want to let you explore and see if there's other references, but within this section of code, there's nothing that talks about setbacks. Other, other requirements are things like one additional parking place in addition to what's required for the principal residence. Only one entrance on the front of the house, separate entrances are, for the accessory dwelling unit are permitted on the side or rear. Owner, owner must occupy part of the property.
Do you see what, what's the date on that? Do you see what the date that code?
That's a good question, yeah.
Because I.
Because under that scenario, you'd have to have a pretty darn big primary residence to be able to have an eight hundred foot, it would be twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four.
Excluding the garage because it's a living area. So you'd have to have a pretty good.
So January ten, two thousand and eighteen. Is that the newest, do you think, or is there newer?
No, that would, that would be, they're, they're requiring owner occupied.
Well, let me, let me read the wording carefully.
Oh, is that for VR? Well, I know, yeah.
Either the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit must be occupied by an owner of the property.
That's surprising. That's a really hard one to enforce.
I think that's a good one.
I, I don't disagree with that. I mean, I think it's a good in concept, but trying to enforce something like that is really tough. And I am an advocate of not putting things on the books that you cannot enforce. It's like, it's like trying to define in your code what a family is today.
How about trying to define what an ADU is?
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm going to go home.
Under that code, you could not convert your, your garage or your shop to an ADU because it says for, or thirty-three percent, whatever is less, if you have an eight hundred and fifty square foot.
Wow.
Is, is that total living space or just a footprint?
That's my footprint.
That's your footprint.
I do have a basement and living space.
Far as that, then?
Yeah, and there's some storage area down there that doesn't probably calculate into that, but, well, it probably does.
So what I have is that right now with the, with kind of the straw polling, that there would, could be three type, you could have any one of three types of accessory dwelling units. It could be inside, like a mother-in-law can be an addition or it could be a detached building, that a, a tiny home, the one that's on a, on a, on a trailer would not be permissible as an accessory dwelling unit. The, and there is that the accessory dwelling units, if they're detached, could not be any higher taller than the, the, the primary structure. There would need to be an additional onsite parking space and, and that accessory dwelling unit, new detached accessory dwelling units could not, would, would have to meet the twenty foot setback requirement. And that the lot coverage could increase to forty-five percent for ADUs. That still leaves some ambiguity about the, the ADU's size, but as written right now, the code says six hun- no, no longer, accessory dwelling unit cannot be larger than six hundred square feet. And, and that the total of all accessory structures cannot exceed seven hundred and twenty. So basically you could have a, a smaller accessory or you could have more of them if they're smaller, but there is a cap. So that's kind of where all the things are right now, but we can poke it at any place and kind of alter it.
I'm with you on everything except the forty-five percent. I don't think we ever had a conclusion on that. So let's, let me try and see if we can push on that. Are we comfortable with an increase of lot coverage from thirty-five to forty-five with ADUs?
Reluctant yes.
Reluctant yes.
So thirty-five for the primary and then with an ADU, it can go up to forty-five?
Yes.
Yeah, you have to do that. You don't have a choice.
Always have a choice.
Yeah.
I am comfortable with the increase or an ADU. Randall's not.
Well, I'm actually comfortable with the increase. I just don't like the fact that then we took away something from just somebody that wants to do a single family home. We're giving preference.
Is that reluctance that you had as well, Brian? Is that kind of a double standard that if you add an ADU, you get this exemption and if you don't, you're locked into a smaller coverage?
Because I think if we're looking at community standards, there should be community standards and we want light and this or the other thing and we have a certain lot coverage. And to me, it's almost like it shouldn't matter if it's a single family or an ADU, you need to meet that standard. The same thing with the setbacks. It's part of the issue for me with the setbacks, like I think we should have a consistent code if it's a community standard. So that's kind of my issue. I, I, I'm actually not opposed to the forty-five percent, but I, but I would be an advocate for them. If that, if you think that's appropriate for ADU, then it should also then be across the board, the appropriate percent.
For the primary.
So that's just kind of where I am at my own philosophy.
I, I think my reluctance was based on the same, two different standards. If we have a, a maximum lot size for a typical dwelling, wouldn't it be appropriate to apply that uniformly? But, but the, the reason I'd say a yes, the yes part of reluctant yes is that we, we do see a need here that, for affordable housing. And so maybe we're willing to sacrifice a little bit of our typical development standard in return for the, the utility, the benefit that's brought to the community by. So that's, that's the yes part of my reluctant yes.
I think, I was, I was comfortable with the five-foot setback in the, in the rear backyard and having my colleagues tell me that nobody wanted to do twenty feet just made me even more comfortable with the forty-five percent increase. You're still locking it into the same, as the consistency of the design, the same setbacks, regardless of whether it's an ADU or an addition, then I guess, but, but I can see, you know, I, I could see us going with a forty percent coverage. I, I would be comfortable with that. I think Randall's point has merit and I agree with him on that.
So for just answering the question before, I'm okay with the forty-five. Just kind of in my own mind, I would go an extra step, but, but yeah, for that question, I'm okay.
I think the point is mute because if you add an accessory building up to six hundred feet, you're already using the forty-five.
Unless you start at twenty-five and go from twenty-five to thirty-five.
Depends on the, on the, on the size of the lot again, on the size of the house you have.
Well, what I'm saying is what's lined out in the schematic, you have the seventy-five percent, you have a six hundred foot, which is already your, your ten percent, so it's a mute point.
In that schematic, it is, that's a potential lot, it's not a typical.
Right. But, I mean, by the same token, if you're allowing a, a six hundred foot, already increased.
I think if I can reiterate what John is sharing is that this isn't really geared towards what we're seeing with most new development. This is geared towards what we already have existing and how it could facilitate the additional ADUs. Is that accurate, John? Have you missed anything?
This is not going forward, this infilling, is that what we're saying?
Well, it certainly would go forward, but most of the lots that we are seeing developed would not be able to utilize these.
So and it's in the future, you, you, you had that kind of, the, the Hayden Home experience, but in the future you won't have that because it said that there's a six thousand square foot minimum lot size. So if going forward, the, the norm would be at least six thousand square feet. I think the, the question is, would you more likely see in a, in a new subdivision like in McKernan, Christensen, would you likely see a house built with a, with a, an accessory dwelling unit or would you more likely see an accessory dwelling unit be added to one of the older lots in town with one of the older houses and things? I, I think I probably would agree with John that it's more likely to be something that happens on an older, an established lot like, like John had where you have to have a small house and it lends itself to that.
Yeah.
Or you have to have a big lot and it lends itself to it. But it's, my guess is probably in a, in a new house situation, you're probably going to see them try to maximize the size of the house.
So we're talking.
What I see though is that maybe then thirty years down the road in the new development, that's when now you get to the point that somebody starts thinking about, okay, I would like to add an ADU up to my house. Things change and of course there'll be laws changing.
And, and maybe they can do it, it'll just have to be within the home. Or maybe you might have a developer that will come along and say, I want to build a subdivision. We saw a little bit of that start out on the east end of town, past Assumption Church there, that the first developer that went in to that development out there, they, they were building relatively modest sized homes, footprints. And then they had, there was a couple of them that were built that had a garage with a, an apartment on it, or accessory dwelling unit on it. And that was, that was their model. And there was a lot of yard around those homes because they kept the primary homes, the main residence, small. So you may see that. I don't know what their ratios were for lot coverages and whatnot, or their lot sizes, but.
So across the street from my sister's house in Tiger, Oregon, a suburb of Portland, so the houses are about twenty, twenty-five years old. And so there's a house with a three-car garage that now they converted one of the bays and they added onto the garage. It was basically like a ranch style house. So they added on top of the garage, living area and converted one space and basically built an apartment. So now you, that's the entry, that third, that garage bay, kind of get in there. I don't know exactly what's inside of there, I guess a kitchen and dining or something and you probably go upstairs to a, you know, a couple of bedrooms and a bath or something. So I can see that happening, you know, in, in the new subdivision after it starts maturing, you know, over time and there'll be some people with some needs and things that happen.
Yeah, I think what, what we have to watch for is to be careful that what we zone it originally. Is it going to be a single-family dwellings, multi-family dwellings? You know, what, what do we have? All of a sudden, single-family only become multi-family.
Well, I mean, remember the tour that went on, you know, in Walla Walla, a lot of those old neighborhoods, they started out with big, huge farm, you know, the, the farmer lived in town and had a ten-bedroom house or whatever, I mean, these big mansions, right? And over time, you know, the depression hit and somebody turned a old house into an apartment building and, or put a, the cottage in their backyard or in the accessory dwelling unit back there. I mean, neighborhoods evolve. I think that's, I don't know if there's anything wrong with that. It's get, yeah.
We see it here at the university that's converted a lot of those older homes, along with them and there to, you know, two or three apartments from a old home.
And those lots are extended, so I mean, you could put like three or four different dwelling units on.
So what I think I've heard and my colleagues can gently correct if I'm wrong, is that we are willing to increase the coverage. There's some discussion about whether we should consider increasing that for all residential development, not just with ADUs. I kind of think that makes sense myself and I know Randall and Brian are shaking their heads, yes, so I think that's.
So if we made that a blanket forty-five percent coverage, if it, if they utilized the forty-five percent coverage on their primary dwelling, then they could not put an ADU in the back?
You have a, a certain amount of building footprint on a lot and whether it's thirty-five percent or forty-five percent or any other percent and you just add them all up and that's what you have. And so you may have a situation where you want to have an accessory dwelling unit, you can't, whether it's thirty-five or forty-five, because the size of the lot, the size of the primary unit, you may not be able to.
So should we come back next time? Not that we're wrapping up now, but should we come back next time and chew on that maximum ADU size some more? Move on for now?
I, I would like it if you guys would give the setback thing a little bit more thought as well, but.
Well, I'm with you. I heard that by myself.
Tell, tell us more, John.
Well, I mean, I guess I, the yard setback for the primary residence, it, it's to assure that we have yards, but if we're going to allow, our current code allows an accessory building that's six hundred square feet to meet reduced, to, to have reduced setbacks, I guess I don't see the difference between allowing a residence to occur into that structure, especially if we're capping the height at fourteen feet or whatever. And so it's not really a big building or anything. It's a, I, I just don't, I guess I don't understand why we would need an additional twenty feet behind that building in order for the ADU to occur. I don't, I don't, I don't get it.
So if the twenty feet that were behind that building, if we took fifteen foot and put it between the building, the primary residence and the ADU, it would just add more yard between the two?
Right, yeah, it's going to, you're, you're not, I don't think we're taking away, especially if we have got lot coverage, we've got building heights, we've got, we're considering restricting the size of it. Uh, the, I, we're still, there's still going to be yard there. It's, you're, you're, I don't know, you're getting the unit a little bit further away from the primary, so you have some separation between the two units, so.
So in this, I'll, I'll against my philosophical comment, if we have lot coverage requirements, then why have, if that's good for that case, why not then allow somebody to build up to five feet from the yard? They want a skinny long house to go up to five feet with more yard on the side or?
Well, again, it's, it's kind of what, the, the concept of when you go out in your backyard, you, you have viewscapes of relatively uninterrupted, you know, there's not structures and things and, you know, you don't have a, a two-story tall structure that is overshadowing your yard. So when, you know, in the afternoon, you don't get any sun because of the placement of the main building. So you try to block your primary homes within the same areas so that, you know, you can garden, you can have a garden without, you know, worrying about your neighbor.
So we're worrying about the house next door based on your neighbors. Then what makes this accessory units dwellings or accessory structures any special that then we're giving, I mean, we're taking away then that criteria. It still can block then your neighbors.
Well, not if we, not if we restrict the height and the size of them.
So I guess my question again is if you restrict this, the, the height, why wouldn't you be able to build a house, one side of your house up to five feet, you know, brand new house? You still need the lot size requirements, you need the height not to exceed this up to five feet under your backyard because you want this different designed house that does that? I mean, I'm just trying to be a little bit of a devil's advocate, but.
I think you're exactly right in asking that question. I think you're exactly right in asking that question, and I would close the question as well, that if you're already allowed to do a garage, you know, a non-occupied building five foot from the rear set line, what is the difference between that, which could be just as tall and high and wide, or whatever is obstructed to some wider view, as an occupied structure? I don't see a difference between those two myself. My, but, but, not to discount, 'cause you're right, I, I hear what you're saying.
So, so I guess I'm kind of struggling a little bit, and I'm trying to be a little bit more uniform, and, and what's so special about this or that, maybe we need to, to say, okay, we do want a certain setback, 'cause it makes sense, you know, let's say five feet on the sides is the minimum, I can see, yeah, that's the minimum, you know, probably should be more, but the reality aside, but five minimum. But why not then allow, you know, we're willing to allow an accessory unit to be five feet from the back, well, let's allow the main house to be five foot from the back too, or 10 feet, or whatever we come up with that we think it's fair for the backyard, and just let it happen as long as then you meet the other standards, you know, lot coverage, maybe the building height on the back 10 feet, or the back 15, or something, is to be, so let's treat them equal. That would be my argument.
In my mind, the distinction between a dwelling unit and a garage or unoccupied space was one of privacy, and I, I think about the time that I spent living on Sky Avenue, our house is an older home, but it was maybe six feet from the back property line, and it was about 14 feet tall, and, you know, a story and a half. And at that height, we had a wonderful view into our neighbor's backyard and into her windows, and she was very gracious about it, but she, she planted a, a hedge, that they grew and grew and grew, in the hope that she'd have some privacy in her, her backyard. And I always felt a little awkward, I, I wouldn't have built that close to the property line had I built the home, it was built in 49. And so, again, it's an issue of privacy. If, if, for example, we, if we allowed homes closer than 20 feet, if we said five feet, but we required that they have a maximum height of eight feet, then an ordinary fence would block the view into the, the next yard, and that would, in my mind, address the privacy concern.
There is a provision that says that the windows have to be oriented, either obscured glass, or they have to be oriented away from...
The side yards.
Yeah, so that, that there is some privacy provision built in as written right now.
For the ADU.
Yes.
But not for the primary.
Not for the primary.
So this could be really, in a sense, it could be really nice, you could imagine the, the house in the front, and then if you wanted an ADU in the back, you put it kind of tucked back along one side and to the back, so you still maintain this large green space for both the house and the ADU. That would seem to be a good space, a good use of the lot, the main windows in the ADU would face into the green space, not into the neighbor's yard. Seems like there's way, there's ways that you could address, and also, as you mentioned, you could address the privacy concern. So I'm, I'm warming to the idea of less than 20 feet, but it would need to be with the right restrictions.
Have you guys gotten online and looked at, there are some other municipalities that have a lot of money to do, go through this process, and they've got great examples of what it looks like to put an accessory dwelling unit in a relatively small backyard, architectural renderings, and, and they have other buildings on, and, you know, it's all hypothetical, but I would encourage you to, to go...
John, if you have something in mind, maybe we could just send them the link.
Yeah, could you?
That'd be great.
But I, I think you've, you've done a good job of framing the issue and the trade-off, and one of the questions that I think you're, you're discussing is, is there a difference between an accessory dwelling unit and other accessory buildings when it comes to where they are on the lot? If you are, if you can put a 400-square-foot shop within five feet of the back property line, does it make a difference if somebody's mother-in-law lives there, or it's just a shop? The building is there, so, and that's, I think, one of the questions, so, I think, you know, the discussion of, should the, the rear setback just be five feet for everything, or should it be 20 feet for everything? Those, I mean, that's exactly, that, that's, that's the policy discussion.
You know, and the other issue is, my neighbor has a two-story house, and even though they're meeting all the setbacks from their second story, they still have a great view of my backyard, so, you know, this issue of privacy, again, is like, you know, they, they could be five feet away, and maybe just a story and a half, but if the window's right, they'd have the same view, or maybe even a worse view than the second story that's over there.
Yes.
And the same thing, topography, you know, this house is higher than the other, it's sloping down. So, I guess my opinion is more in the sense of, I wanna treat everybody as much as possible the same, have the same, you know, property owner has the same or similar rights, depending on what they're doing there. So, if, if we're gonna say that you have a 20-foot setback from your primary residence, I don't see why I need to then bend that rule for an ADU. But at the same time, if we wanna say, well, let's make it a 10-foot setback for everybody, or even the five foot, although I think that's getting too close, but even the five foot for everybody, I'd probably be okay, you know, because we will have lot coverage, so you still are gonna have the open space, it's just situated differently. And I would like to give somebody the creativity to build their house that way if they wanted to, you know, that they could go up to the five feet or the 10 feet from the backyard on a, wherever that building is, however they built it, that means that they would have bigger yard on, you know, different space, in a different place in their lot. So that's kind of my, I guess, my philosophy. And I don't know if anybody else, you know, some other cities have, have anything like what I'm proposing.
I've never heard of it, but, you know? You know, actually, I think if there, what's the, it was the trend on zoning codes a while ago. There's a catch, catchy...
Form-based?
Form-based codes may, may allow that kind of flexibility, because they, they actually look at the form of the building, so you would probably factor in things like, well, okay, you're five feet off, and you're going, you're gonna go the entire length of this 100-foot deep lot, and have five-foot set box on three sides, or two sides, or whatever. They would look at the windows, you know, or, you know, are they viewing into the neighboring property, and the height, they would probably factor in height, and factor in how much shade that two-story structure was gonna cause on the neighboring property that maybe was built more traditionally, and, you know, you'd get into all sorts of stuff like that, that is comp, they're complicated zoning codes, you have to have, have to have an army to interpret them, and process permits, and architects, and...
So I guess, if it was up to me, this would be my proposal, and my proposal is that we say 40% lot coverage on everything, maybe a 10, 10-foot setback on the rear yard for everything, and call it good. So, whether it's a, a, a accessory dwelling unit, or a main residence, you know, as long as you don't go over the 40%, and those setbacks that we say, then play with it, and do what you wanna do. Maybe there'll be some standard too, that maybe the height of the last 10 feet or something, if we think that that's an issue, need to be a level or something. Or maximum height, if you're intruding to that extra 10 feet in the backyard, but, I guess I'm more for kind of letting people have the same set of standards, and then let them be created with what they have.
Farshad, Jim, so... Your concerns about that, John?
Uh, I'm not going there. I think Randall's, his engineering colors are showing tonight. No, I...
I'll try Greg, your concerns about that?
I, um, I don't have a concern about that. I, I mean, I think there, there's, the, um, yeah, I just don't have a concern about it. I think, you know, just, on a personal level, I kind of come down, like, like you do, that a, that the building is the building, and what occurs inside of it is, is not as, as important, and so, if, if, if I could have a shop within five feet of the property line, then it, it should, you know, it, it, you know, whether it's an accessory dwelling unit or a shop, they're, they're both the same to me. And, and I think that, you know, then the question is, do we allow some exceptions, or just make it for everybody? I was kind of looking at the numbers here, trying to figure out, if somebody really wanted to, if you just said that the backyard setback was five feet, so it was side, side, and side was all five, could somebody really build a screwy house? And the answer is, yeah, maybe, but if somebody is really determined to do something screwy, nope, codes never, can't anticipate everything and prohibit everything. And so, including the kind of electric celery green that one of my neighbors has started to paint their beautiful old white house, that just looks gorgeous, especially in the spring and everything, and now this is, I'm like, "Ahh!" So, I, I just, I think the notion that a code is gonna deal with everything, just not gonna happen. So where's kind of the sweet spot that you wanna be, and I don't, I just don't think, among the options you're talking about, there's really a bad option, there's just different ones. I could go with that.
So is there an alley, is there laws that we have alleys between our houses and the back? What about fire? I mean, are we...
Well, your, fire code, the fire marshal does review plats, you know, so if, if they're, if the lots were beyond 150 feet in depth, they would require additional access to the backs of those lots, and that would probably be a scenario where a developer would have to factor in a, a alley or something like that to provide additional access. We just, most developers tend to see that additional, it's additional right-of-way that takes up from their, you know, developable space, you just don't see it very often.
But if you put a house, the, the primary residence up to five foot, five foot here, that's 10 foot between these, five foot here, that's 10 foot between these?
10 feet is the, is the separation without having to do special building techniques.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask my team to reconsider the setback requirements in the rear. John's gonna give us some wonderful examples that he's seen, so that we can chew on that. And I want, again, my team to talk about, or discuss, and be prepared to talk further about the maximum ADU size, whether that's a specific square footage, links to the lot, links to the primary residence, how we wanna handle that. Is there anything else that...
What I respected, I just, what we didn't touch upon, the code as written says that if you have an accessory building on your lot right now, so, the scenario John has, where it's already there, when I talk about building a new one, it's, there is already a garage or a shop there, if it is larger than, than 600 square feet, the code says it could be converted to an accessory dwelling unit, you just can't increase the, you know, you can't make it bigger, but if it's there, you can convert what's there. So if you have like a 800-foot garage, you don't have to leave 200 of it in the garage, you can convert the garage. So, that, that's another factor here, kind of going back to the scenario, what's likely to happen? I think conversion of existing buildings might happen, that, that would be more likely than, in my mind, than a, a new building being built, although there are examples of new buildings being built. We go to, to Portland frequently to see the kids, and, and accessory dwelling units are popping up all over in neighborhoods in Portland, and there's a lot of creative design, and really kind of cool things going on with them and stuff, and for planners that might want a block, it's great to walk around and see all these new accessory dwelling units and stuff, so it's possible, but that's in a real estate, that's in the Portland real estate market, and the Seattle real estate market, and there is a, there's a, an affordable housing, significant affordable housing issue here in Walla Walla, and as John said, it's primarily for rental units. That's the, the, the principal aspect of it. How many people are gonna build new access, you know, buildings and say, this is now a house, am I gonna rent out on my property? I don't know, but I can see conversions, like, you know, the scenario John has, I've got this shop in my backyard.
Some may have missed this, but talking about an existing 600-square-foot garage, could you build, under our draft, could you build another 600-square-foot ADU in addition to having that 600 square foot garage?
If it's, if it's detached, then it's, you, you have a, the cap of 720 square feet of accessory buildings.
Okay.
And no, and no building can be larger than 600, so if you had an, if you had an existing 400-square-foot garage, you could add a 320-square-foot ADU, you know, something like that, as a threat.
Okay. Is there anything else that you wanted to cover today? And then let's 10 minutes.
The, I, maybe just set the stage for the, the, the next discussion. The, you, we were talking all the way through this, it really, and, and each one of you highlighted this, we're, now we're really talking about at what point, you know, we have a single family, and now we're adding, talking about adding an additional dwelling unit, when does things start to change? But we have that all, other list of, of housing types, cottage housing, cohousing, and, and, and things of that nature, and one of the things that we said we were gonna continue to think about is, where should they be permitted? As written, we wrote the code that those other types of housing that involve a number of different dwelling units would be permitted in the multifamily zone, but not the single-family zone.
Right.
And so, the que, as you go forward, keep, I encourage you, keep thinking about that, 'cause we've been right there in it, and it's really interesting, because it's getting a lot of thought right now, um, there, there, and, and article in the, in the paper, Milwaukee, Minneapolis, I guess, and it says, in a bold move, Minneapolis became the first major city in the country to approve a plan to end single-family zoning citywide. Well, it's not, you read it, it's not quite that bold, but what they have said now is, is that anywhere you can build a single-family residence, you can build a duplex, and you can build a triplex. So they've kind of recalibrated, and said, up to three is okay, four is where we're gonna start thinking about multifamily development. So if we're thinking about clusters and cottages and all these other things, where do we draw along?
Did you wanna talk about planner scripts? That was one question that...
Yes, thank you. Yeah, let's talk about planner scripts.
So it's number three.
So what we had discussed last night, do you wanna refresh our memory of the current...
Yeah, the way, the way it is, is, is written is that planner scripts would be required with creating new lots, so this is a subdivision regulation, this applies to, to new lots. If new lots are being created, 10 or more lots... If new lots are being created, ten or more lots are being created, that planner strips would be required on arterial and collector streets, but not on the local streets. So, um, if you had, in case of the Karen Christensen subdivision, it would, the, a collector in arterial would likely be the main street into the subdivision, but after that, the rest of the streets in that area would likely be local streets and would not require a planner strip. So that's how it's written right now. And one of the questions was whether to require planner strips on local streets, or is there perhaps some way of, of, of compensating or offsetting that requirement, um, um, perhaps by reducing the front yard setback requirement so that you're not penalized if you had a, a, a planning strip? So since, some kind of discussion about, um, consistency and uniformity, but as written now, um, it would not apply to local streets. So if you think about some of the subdivisions, we went on the tour, where they were on all streets, that would not be the case as written right now.
Yeah, something else to keep in mind is that as we move forward and grow, we will add some, you know, arterials and some, but most of our streets that we're going to build are going to be neighborhood streets that people live on. So what do we want our community to look like as we grow? What are our neighborhoods going to look like? Do we want them to look like status quo, what we've been doing today? Or do we want them to look like Alvarado Terrace? Or, you know, that's kind of the, the question that we, we need to answer, answered so we can move forward.
Sidewalks?
Well, sidewalks are required.
Okay.
On, on both sides. Uh, the question is, is whether or not there's a, a planting strip and, or a street trees, I guess.
But they would be required on collector streets.
The way the code's written right now, yeah.
The question comes is what they do with planner strips. Because some people will put flowers or grass or some other kinds of, some bush or some just gravel, you know, so talking about consistency, you're not going to have consistency.
Yeah. Oh, when, the new developments that we've seen in Walla Walla where they have the planting strips, the developer's been putting in, you know, grass and, and trees.
And the city takes care of it or the HMO?
No, this, I don't believe the city takes care of it, they, either an HOA or the individual property owner.
It's a little bit odd because it's in the street, it's in the right of way, but it's the property owner's responsibility.
Just like the sidewalk.
Unless they change the rule in Walla Walla, that planner strip cannot be put in the rocks.
And, and the way the code, yeah, and the way we wrote the code was is that it, it, it had to be, um, plant-see and irrigated.
Yeah, I, I would envision, um, having a requirement that the HOA be responsible for those strips, otherwise you're not going to get the consistent look, you're not, I mean, initially you will, but eventually somebody will stop water in their yard and, or they'll decide to cut down their tree, uh, because they want to park on the, park the planting strip or whatever, you know.
I, I would vote against residential. Having the, the, the owner should be the whole thing by the owner, just have planner strips as separate.
I'm not sure I can track what you're saying. Try me again.
You put a planner strip, as John says, over time it can change and lose the consistency because it's not maintained by the city, it's maintained by the owner, and the owner is creative.
Okay.
So Scott's a no. No planting strip?
Yes. A big yes.
Monty's a yes.
You're for planner strips?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, the thing.
I love the shade, I love the trees, I love the color changes, I love walking on a sidewalk that doesn't go up and down at every driveway, I like planting, parking underneath the shade, I like taking my son on the sidewalk that's five foot and where no traffic.
Yes, that.
I like everything about it. I love planner strips, I'm all in.
Well, the kids stepping off into the street, that, and riding their bikes into the street, that concerns me.
There are some downsides I just didn't mention.
But I don't want weeds in the planner strip.
So Eileen, are you a yes?
I'm a yes with the HMO or HOA.
HMO? With a health care plan in place for the trees and the grass.
Health care for the lawn.
That's assuming they have one.
I want them required to keep it up.
Assuming they have one.
My only reluctance would be the impact on affordable housing.
I, I think it's probably relatively modest additional costs for requiring a planting strip included. Any, any thoughts from anyone on that?
Well, you're going to reduce.
It's kind of the next question, but that's part of it.
You're going to reduce the build, the buildable number of lots, right? You know, you're going to require this additional right of way. So whatever that adds up to, it could be two, three, four lots, depending on the size of the subdivision.
Unless we're willing to give them the discount.
Give them a five pound.
Yeah. They're, they're giving up five foot of frontage, what we're giving a right back because they've given us the planner strip. So in other words, it's still a fifteen, it's still a twenty foot setback from the curb line, but now instead of being, um.
Well, but does that mean then, then?
Twenty foot yard, you're getting five foot planner strip and a fifteen foot yard.
But then does that mean that instead of a six thousand square foot lot, then it's six thousand minus whatever that five foot is, so now the lot is smaller?
And that, we talked about that, I think we had talked about, you could calculate in that right of way area, I mean.
I mean, the only, the only way that it makes sense as far as not reducing the number of potential building lots is that then you make the lot smaller. Because if the lots are the same size, you just give them the bonus that the house could be closer to the sidewalk, then you still end up with the same number of, I mean, you still reduce the, but the amount of lots and potentially then the affordability effect. But again, to, to me, I have two issues that I'll, you know, one is we're setting a standard for our community, uh, and if we want the street trees and that's our standard, and it makes, it, it means that then, you know, maybe the, it, it means that the lots are going to be a little more expensive. To me, it's like, so be it. I mean, I don't think that necessarily we need to think that our community standard needs to be that we're going to be the low-cost home in the valley. I think we've provided some of those already. So anyway, that's just kind of, uh, and, and regardless, a new home probably is not going to be the affordable home anyway. I mean, the, the reality is that, that even if it's on a smaller lot and everything else, it's still probably more expensive than some older homes somewhere in another neighborhood.
You know, one thing that we kind of heard, and I think you might have been at the, the community council workshop on affordable housing, is that it's not necessarily that the lots are too big or, um, the affordability issue is really the product that we're being sold. If you only need a one bedroom, but everything on the market is a three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, then that's not affordable for you. It's the, some, sometimes it comes down to the products that we're being offered, not necessarily whether or not, you know, the developer's able to get enough lots to make it affordable or, um, it, come, a lot of it comes down to the product that we're being offered that is the, the hurdle for the affordability issue.
So memory, please, of who? I'm a yes, but I would like to see us consider a reduced setback so that, uh, it's not a, a developer doesn't lose, uh, significant space, but I am a yes for, for planner strip.
You know, tag on Brian, I agree, I'm pretty comfortable with that five foot offside.
So it would be a yes, but the lot size remains the same, and look for some other alternatives, and the one I'm thinking about, it wouldn't work everywhere, but on the big like, the, the current insight, where you have a bigger area, it could work. Uh, then maybe we consider one-way streets, and that way we reduce the right-of-way requirement to offset the, the planner strip.
Would the property owner be taxed for this?
No, but they would likely see the benefit of higher property values when they resell.
Which in turn will be taxed.
That's right. Which, the new owner will be taxed, yeah. The sale, the re, will get more re.
Well, no, even the assessment.
Yeah, that's true.
What it does is it increases the amount of land required for right-of-way dedication by ten feet. So it does reduce potentially the, um, um, amount of buildable area. Now, five feet across sixty is three hundred square feet, so it takes, you know, a lot, you know, a lot of three hundred feet before, you know, you, it, it starts to impact the number of lots. Um, but there already is a dedication, you know, there's already that issue of, are we going to require parking on both sides of the street? Um, is it a five-foot sidewalk? Is it a six-foot sidewalk? Is it going to be, um, um, eleven-foot lanes, twelve-foot lanes? There's a whole number of variables that affect the amount of right-of-way dedication, but it ends up really being reflected in the street standard is, is what ends up happening. Here's the cross-section for Wolford Creek, here's the cross-section for Fector, here's the cross-section for an arterial.
And, and another clarification, this, this is not a requirement on a short block.
No.
This is all, it'll be ten lots or more.
All right. So, you know, to some degree, we're talking about the big land that's still available in the city and what do we want it to look like?
Right.
And that's where, you know, I agreed that I would like to have the street tree canopy, but again, I would like to propose that maybe they, we should have one-way streets to try and mitigate for that.
In residential?
In the residential.
Dennis, we didn't hear from you on your thoughts on.
Well, I like the way it's written right now. Collectors are, collectors have the five foot right of ways on both sides, I mean, the tree things. Um, when it comes right down to the local area though, your local subdivision or whatever it is, that should be no. Or it could be, or it could be, uh, an op, an option for the developer. If the developer thinks that, that it's going to be a real fancy subdivision, then he can put in the trees. If not, I lived here thirty years and there's, down in Pendleton for, with, with that one, you know, you don't need it, but it's nice, it's very, very nice, I like it. But I think it should be an option to the developer at that level.
So, but how was the, the?
So that would be a no?
I had, I had four yeses and basically two nos. And I don't know what Ken might say about some of this stuff, but he's not here, so.
And yes is to require the planner?
I think it was require the planting strip and for the most part reduce setback, except Randall didn't like the reduced setback, which.
Yeah, I'm not strong on that, but I mean, it, it does make sense to me. Cost is an issue, then kind of balancing that.
We could.
I kind of also agree with you, if you're going to want this, if you want this standard, why are you kind of undercutting yourself?
They're still going to have a twenty foot setback for the garage. Um, I think Walla Walla has an allowance where they allow like front porches to encroach, I think it's up to eight feet.
Yeah, you're right, twenty foot setback for the garage is the good part of my, so.
Yeah, because you need to have that driveway behind the sidewalk.
So one of the things to remember is that most subdivisions also have a ten-foot public utilities, middle, front lawn, back of side of lawn.
Yep.
So, I mean, potentially in the future at some point, some utility's going to come and you're five feet from your wall and they're digging up versus, you know, because they're replacing a utility or, or putting in a new utility like I do now, in my, in my other life.
Yep.
So. I think maybe just one other thing as we go forward, because ultimately this is going to be a recommendation to the city council, I think it would be appropriate on issues that got a lot of debate and were very closely decided, I think it would be appropriate as a part of the recommendation to flag those to the city council and say, here's our recommendation and here's something that we were very closely divided on and discussed at length and want you to know in particular, this issue, whatever it is. Um, I think that's, that, that, that would be appropriate, um, so that if, you know, it was close to the desert hall, the city council knew that that's what was.
So, uh, next, are we ready to, are we done talking about this stuff? Okay. The next meeting, um, we're going to have a joint meeting with council. Um, so that'll be a good opportunity to kind of, we can talk about where we're, where we're at, and we can talk about some of the split items and maybe they might have some feedback on their, you know, their opinion. So I guess what I will do is I will send out, um, some, uh, some websites to visit for accessory dwelling units. I'll probably also throw in some websites for cottage housing because that's kind of one of the topics we didn't, we didn't hit tonight, but that's also another, um, kind of a northwest thing that's been happening, and I think, uh, we have some infilled lots that might be able to take advantage of that type of housing, so I want you to be able to have a good idea in your mind beyond what Greg's artwork is here for.
What's the date?
Uh, it is the?
Nineteenth.
It will be on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth of February.
Yeah, and, and once again, that'll be with the city council, we'll, um.
We usually start those meetings at five thirty.
So is this a council meeting?
It'll be a council, oh yeah, it'll be a council and planning commission joint workshop.
Workshop.
But it's still on the, is the nineteenth a Tuesday?
Yes.
It's a Tuesday, it's going to be on the night that we normally have planning commission.
But we'll move it up earlier.
We'll move it up earlier to five thirty if that works for everybody.
Then it's over.
It'll be, it'll be, I'll let you know, it'll probably be in here, that's where we usually have our workshops. Um, and since I don't expect that there will be many people from the public attending, I think we can make this space work.
Anything else, John?